Thank you very much everybody. We're gonna call this meeting in order of the Montclair City Council along with the other bodies. And I welcome everybody to our city council meeting. As we traditionally do, we'll begin with the invocation, the pledge allegiance and Andrea, who are the two individuals?
Our invocation will be led by Pastor Joe McTarsney of Calvary Montclair and the pledge will be led by council member Benjamin Lopez.
Okay, please stand.
Please join me in prayer. Our Father, we thank you that you are faithful to hear and receive our prayers this evening. I praise you Father for the leadership of our city. Continue to grant them wisdom as they make many decisions for our community. We pray especially for those that are on the front lines, Lord. Grant them great success in all their work. I pray that you protect each of our leaders and protect their family members, Lord. We thank you that you are a caring Savior and a shepherd that walks with us and thank you for this evening. We pray this in Jesus's name. Amen.
Please join me in reciting the pledge of allegiance. The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you. May I please have roll call?
Councilmember Lopez.
Here.
Councilmember Martinez.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Mayor Protem Ru.
Present at City Hall.
Mayor Dutre.
I'm here.
Thank you.
Next to mine, the next item on the agenda is the consent calendar. This provides the public an opportunity to speak to the city council on Ian that's not on the agenda if they request to speak on a consent counter of this item on the agenda. Traditionally is done, the public has five minutes to address the city council under public comment or five minutes on one or more of the consent counter business items. If you're on Zoom, please hit raise hand function and if you're on the phone, please dial star nine to request to speak under public comment or for a consent counter business item. Due to the round act, the city council is prohibited to discuss any item that is not on the agenda. At this time, I ask the city clerk if she has any speakers.
Thank you. First, we have a request from Ruby Long from Supervisor Kurt Hagman's office.
Ruby, okay, Ruby, are you there? There she is. Ruby Long, Ruby Long, it's all yours.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, well, once again, it's Ruby Long from Supervisor Kurt Hagman's office and I just have a quick announcement that on February 26th, we will be having our coffee with Kurt and that will be co-hosted with Tanise Johnson. So we're very excited about that. And that will be held at Moncler Police Department and that's 4870 Arrow Highway, Montclair. And once again, it's February 26th, it's gonna be from 9:00 AM to 10:30. And the supervisor is really excited to get out there and, you know, meet some of our residents and get to communicate and connect again after all these, well, these last couple of years with everything that's gone on. So we're very excited about that. February 26th, we hope to see lots of faces there.
Well, thank you very much.
And I can go ahead and do it in Spanish. I know Ben has mentioned before that, you know, it'd be good to do it in Spanish as well. So soy Ruby de parte del condado, el supervisor del condado. Y estamos teniendo el febrero 26, vamos a tener café con el supervisor y va a ser en el departamento de policía en Montclair. Y va a ser febrero 26 de las nueve a las diez y media y el supervisor está emocionado para estar ahí para conocer muchas caras nuevas. Y es café con el supervisor en febrero 26. And that's it on my end. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Looking forward to having coffee with Kurt on February the 26th.
Yes, we're excited. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, our next speaker, I think I have, we have Bruce Culp, am I correct Andrea?
Yes, I have no more advanced requests, so no, we just, I just see Bruce Culp with his hand raised.
Okay, Bruce. Bruce, are you there?
I am here.
It's all yours.
Thank you. I wanna first start off saying, go Rams. If you guys have a, don't have Super Bowl plans, make sure you visit a local business and support them. 399 Pizza, Sam Bar, great places. I know B-Dubs is getting filled up fast with their reservations, but anyways, I support local businesses and celebrate the Rams victory at one of those locations or one of your choosing in the city of Montclair. Second, I just wanna continue my support for the Pacific Electric Trail Bridge. I know it's on the agenda tonight. I just wanna ask that you continue to support the, the, the building of that, replacement of that bridge if it's under consideration. And I had one question, if somebody could answer this somewhere along in the, in the meeting tonight, maybe C manager Star. That I was wondering about the width of the bridge. It sounded like there were some comments about the width being a little bit less than the current bridge and I was wondering if it's gonna be wide enough for two bicycles to pass with some room in between. So if somebody could let me know what the status of the bridge width is. And then lastly, I wanted to comment, I know it's on the agenda tonight, but I'm not gonna speak during that item, but I know there's an item on the agenda for affordable housing. I just wanna suggest that I saw an article in the paper the other day about Pomona, building some apartments with starting rents of $624. And I noticed that they, the developer, the person, you know, the people responsible for that were not on the RFP list. And I know, you know, you guys said RFP and these are the people that responded, but sometimes you go out and seek out some people that are doing good work. And this is a company that's a developer or whatever that's providing low income housing and they sure, it sounds, and the site plan looked pretty darn good. I would suggest that the city consider looking at that type of development. And in our future development here in Montclair, that we look for providing that type of low rent housing to get more people with different income levels, the ability to afford living in Montclair. I think that's a wonderful idea. I saw the fencing go around the area next to the MetroLink Center, the trans center. So it looks like they're about to start development there. I look forward to that as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Now let the C manager respond to your question under his C manager's communication. Moving on to the agenda, we'll go to consent calendar. I wanna ask my council colleagues, do they wish to remove the items of the consent calendar?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion for the consent calendar as presented this evening.
Okay, move by the council member, Mayor Protem Ru, I believe Tanise Johnson, Councilmember Johnson's second. Before we go to that, I'm gonna go to resolution D2 real quick. This is the making factual findings compliance with AB 361. My question to my council colleagues are the number of coronavirus cases is tremendously dropped, including here in County San Bernardino. When you look at the county's website, where they keep track of the cases along with other coronavirus issues. And I do believe that we should meet in person again at our next city council meeting. I think the last time we met in late December, the seven day average was below, I think it was about 800, 900 cases per day and currently prior to this weekend, it was around 1,700, but that was also drastically dropping. So I'm expecting that, that seven day average to be way below 1,000 cases for our next regular city council meeting. Does everybody concur with that? Do you have any concern?
Mr. Mayor, I'm okay with that, provided we offer Zoom and teleconferencing for those who may not be able to be here in person, especially our public.
Right. And we will continue to have hybrid means, but we would, when I say go back to in person, it also includes continuation with a hybrid meeting.
And as far as I'm concerned, even meeting in person, I will continue until I know that, you know, things are more clear to continue. I will continue at City Hall to wear face covering.
That's, that's fine, but I, what I'm asking is at our next city council meeting, which is scheduled for February, I have the date now in front of me. February 21st, it's on a Tuesday, I know that, the day after President's Day.
Right.
We meet back in the city council chambers, obviously utilizing the hybrid method, which will still be on Zoom for the public to participate or any councilman who wishes to participate as well, if they don't feel comfortable being in person. Councilman Lopez, your hands up?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I'm obviously fine with proceeding with us meeting in person and having one more option of in person gathering for the public and staff and those of, and us as council to gather at the dais. I, I would actually prefer, not just for our next meeting, I would prefer that we meet on the February 16th mid-year budget review, also in person, given the importance of that meeting. And that is the 16th, which technically is one day after the mask mandate now expires. It was just announced today that the mask mandate will expire on February 15th. So for in-person gathering. And I think we should meet not only for our regular council meeting as scheduled for the, as you stated, I think the 21st, but I think we also need to meet in person for the mid-year budget review on the 16th.
Okay, anybody have any concerns about me on February 16th? In a hybrid format?
A hybrid format, I'm fine with.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would concur with my colleagues. I think it is safe for us to be in the council chambers, not only because the the numbers have gone down, but because we have the partitions between us and we have our masks on and there's room in the audience for people to distance themselves. So I don't have any problem at all with us meeting in person for any of our upcoming meetings.
Okay, Councilmember Martinez?
My only concern would be that the numbers are going down because of the availability of the at-home COVID tests. And I don't know what the research is on that. As long as there is the opportunity for us to appear remotely, you know, maybe as a safety precaution, we can test beforehand. I'm fine with that.
Okay, so with the concurrence to city council, due to the, the cases going down, I do believe by February 16th, the average seven day rate in Sandy County would be less than 1,000 cases per day. And yes, the governor did announce, the governor's office did announce today that the mask mandate for indoor use for everyone ends on February 15 or February 16, one of the two days. So if everybody concurs, then we will meet at a workshop on February 16 in a hybrid format in the council chambers and then obviously continue on that at the council meeting on the following Tuesday at the regular city council meeting. So with those directions, please have roll call and a consent calendar.
Councilmember Lopez.
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Ru.
Aye.
Mayor Dutre.
Aye. So as noted, there's a council workshop on February 16th for the mid-year budget review and as noted, it will be going back to our hybrid format. Is there a motion? Well, if there are no objections, then that workshop is so ordered. Now we'll go down to communication and I'll start communication with the police department. And I believe our chief, Robert Avos, is on the line. You there, Robert?
Yes, I'm here. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you, Mayor Dutre and members of council. I wanted to bring to your attention tonight Assembly Bill 41, which requires the Montclair Police Department to have a military equipment use policy. As you know, on September 30th, 2021, Governor Newsom signed into law seven major peace officer reform bills, which included Assembly, Assembly Bill 41. Assembly Bill 41 was authored to address the funding and acquisition and use of items lawmakers deemed to be considered military equipment. The bill requires law enforcement agencies, including the Montclair Police Department, to obtain approval from the governing body by adoption of a military equipment use policy through an ordinance at a regular meeting prior to taking certain actions relating to the funding acquisition or use of military equipment as defined. And I won't go over at this time the entire segment of areas that are defined, but they do go from the first category all the way to 15 categories. We are already in possession of items that are defined within these categories. These items we've had in our possession for many, many, many years. As an example, one of the items that's listed in the category is armored personnel carriers such as our Peacekeeper. And you know, that is used in obviously defense of the officers as well as rescuing downed officers and rescuing civilians in need and providing protection to the police officers that are doing those tasks by being in an armored vehicle. And as you know, armored vehicles need to be outfitted in a fashion that's conducive to the use by the local law enforcement agency that's deploying them. But as you know, banks and other companies that collect money from businesses drive armored cars as well. However, those types of armored cars aren't conducive to the usage that, or the everyday usage that would happen with law enforcement. So that's why we have those types of vehicles, but the legislature has deemed now that these types of things are considered military equipment. And even though this particular device, which is due for replacement, was originally outfitted for the Air Force and then transitioned to Border Patrol and then ultimately, when it was retired, we were able to obtain it and recondition it for its use with us. That's really the only piece of equipment that we've ever acquired from the military. Although the, this new Assembly Bill requires additional items to be made considered military equipment and requires additional approval. We've already sought approval from the council at various times throughout the past few decades when we have acquired these particular type items. One of the other categories that is listed in this new requirement is a category that covers command and control vehicles and that's category five. And what that particularly covers is, for instance, our mobile command trailer. And you've seen that most often that our mobile contract, command trailer has been used at public relations events such as the National Night Out and other types of events like the, the Country Fair Gymboree. You'll see that we bring our trailer out and we regularly interact with the public. Unfortunately, the Assembly Bill now lists that particular item as considered military equipment. But as you can see, I think you've all seen that particular item in use. It does not appear that it's really military equipment. But nevertheless, this is something that we're gonna have to go through. It does cover various other items that we already use in our possession, such as our less lethal beanbag shotguns. Although shotguns are expressly exempted from this, this particular Assembly Bill. When they are used to use or to deploy less lethal munitions such as beanbags, when we send those particular, when we deploy those particular items at the same time, it turns that particular shotgun now to be considered as a military equipment item. So again, I'm not gonna keep going through all this. I really wanted to just bring this to your attention. Advise you that I've provided hard copies of our proposed military use policy. And I've placed those in your particular offices down at City Hall. It's also on the city's website now as required by law. It does require that before I bring this particular item to the city council for adoption by the way of an ordinance, that it is on the city's website for at least 30 days prior to that first meeting. So we have posted it on the city's website as of late last Thursday. It has its own special tab that's identified by Assembly Bill 41. And there's much of what I'm telling you right now is already listed on the city's website to inform the public. It also has a link to the draft policy and the attached document, which is the military equipment list of items that we currently possess. Excuse me. And if there's any, there's the ability for the public to ask questions about it. But there will also be the ability for the public to comment on any of these items when we bring it forward for your approval at a future council meeting for the first reading of the ordinance and then subsequently at a second reading before it's completely adopted. I will tell you that this does, this policy is required to be in effect before a law enforcement department seeks funding for any of these type items. However, as I stated earlier on, the police department is due for replacing the Peacekeeper and we had already sought funding for that particular item well back in August of 2021. And so that, that process was already underway before this Assembly Bill went into effect. But we are holding off on the continuance of obtaining that funding until we get this particular policy adopted. However, I do feel that because we already did seek that funding well before this bill was even signed into office by Governor Newsom, I feel that we are already okay with continuing to seek that funding, but we're trying to comply with the spirit of the Assembly Bill and try to bring this forward for your consideration and adoption before we actually finalize the, the completion of accepting that funding. So I just wanted to bring this to your attention. You can look at the hard copy that I've provided to you. You can look at what's on the city's website as well. I will be speaking about it. Again, I'm certain when the ordinance comes before you in about 30 days. And if there's any comments from the public at that time or in between, we're more than happy to answer any questions that we can about that. I will move real quickly now to the blood drive that is occurring. On Tuesday, February 22nd, the Montclair Police Department will be partnering in a blood drive with the American Red Cross. Every two seconds, someone in the US needs blood or platelets. Approximately 29,000 units of red blood cells are needed every day in the US and nearly 5,000 units of platelets and six, 6.5 units of plasma are needed daily in the US. The average red blood cell transfusion is approximately three units. A single car accident victim can require as many as 100 units of blood and blood and platelets cannot be manufactured. They can only come from volunteer donors. The blood drive event will be held in the Montclair Community Center gym from 2:00 PM to 8:00 PM. On, again, on February 22nd, that's a Tuesday. Friends, family and members of the community are invited to participate as donors. This year, the American Red Cross will only be taking in those donors that have made an appointment. Identification is required to donate and you can sign up by visiting the www redcrossblood.org and enter the sponsor code Montclair PD, all one word, or call the 1-800-RED-CROSS. I've also printed out quite a few flyers for the blood drive, which I have placed in the mayor and Protem's office, mayor and the mayor Protem's office, as well as in the council members' offices. And there's also a stack of flyers at the front counter for anybody in the public that may want to participate. And again, I've put a few, quite a few in each of the council offices so that if you feel the need or have the opportunity to hand out a flyer to support us and, and get as much participation as we can, we would sincerely appreciate that. And that is all I have unless anybody has any questions.
Councilman Lopez, you have a question?
Yeah, Chief Avos, back to the military equipment policy. Did I read correctly that pepper ball projectiles are to now be classified as military equipment?
Yes, so that, that actually falls under, let me get to it real quick. That falls under category 12, which is considered munitions containing tear gas or OC. So the pepper ball is an OC item. It's actually nothing more really than a paintball gun, which I think many people are familiar with nowadays that, that a lot of the juveniles or minors play those games. Well, in fact, even adults probably pay, play pepper ball games. But basically, that's all it is, is really a paintball gun that is utilized to deploy what looks like a paintball, but it has pepper or OC in it, oleoresin capsicum. And because that is now considered by the Assembly Bill as military equipment, we now have to list that we have four pepper ball launchers, which, mind you, we've probably had for probably a good 15 or 20 years already in our possession and have already been using. But although we don't acquire it from the military, it's now being called or deemed military equipment. So now we have to comply in this manner. And since you, you raised a question about it, I did want to fall back on something. And I did wanna say that not only does it require that we seek this approval through ordinance, it also requires that the police department provide a public report regarding the use of all of the equipment in its possessions annually. And I also need to bring it forward to the city council individually every time we seek new or replacement type items of this nature that are now categorized by this Assembly Bill.
Each, each incidence of purchase has to be brought before us?
Yes. So for instance, in the past, we would normally just request it during the general budget. Now I have to request it in and of itself prior to the budgetary process. So it's likely that by the time this goes through the approval process, you will probably hear a report to the community and yourselves from me annually sometime between February and April of every year. And I will be bringing you agenda reports for anything that are required to be approved by the city council before we make any of those purchases in the next fiscal year.
And, and let me guess, the, the new requirements placed on your department by the state don't come with the adequate funding for the production of these reports, the staffing manpower to devote to these new requirements yet again, correct?
That's correct.
It's all, it's all out of our pocket. I, I noticed the author of the bill is from San Francisco. I have consistently spoken against mandates from the state where they're not gonna reimburse us for the costs that they're imposing upon us. I, I will speak at greater length on this topic when it comes to the city council, but you know, just like the food recycling mandate that they put on us in Burtec, here's another example of yet another Bay Area philosophy being applied as one approach with one fell swoop up and down the state. But Chief, this council member thinks the department is fine without this and the fact that projectiles and even, even peppers, I'm sorry, tear gas, which has been used, gosh, for 60, 70, 80 years is now gonna be deemed a military grade equipment. But yet, as you'd stated, paintballers that do it for recreation aren't gonna be classified as using military grade weapons.
Councilman Lopez, I think you've made your point. This is a report that's been given to the city council. I don't, I'm not happy with this bill too, but unfortunately, we have to live with something. I kinda wish this, this also applied to the criminals, have to do the same thing. So at least the police know what the criminals have, but the criminals at least will know what the police have. So all I wanna do is I wanna move on to the city attorneys. That communication, please.
Thank you, Chief, for your time.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have one item as indicated in the agenda and that's to meet with Ed Starr, our city negotiator regarding the property that's listed there and with the negotiating parties. Other than that one item, I have nothing else this evening.
Great, thank you. C manager report, please. And I believe I'm gonna answer Bruce Culp's question.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I do wanna add some clarification to the governor's mask policy. If a person is unvaccinated, they still are required to wear a face mask indoors. Also, at major events of 1,000 or more people, proof of vaccination Proof of vaccination is required or testing before attendance at that indoor mega event. Program also, again, unvaccinated people are required to wear masks at all times. And for outdoor events of ten thousand or more, there is no requirement to wear a mask, but it is recommended. And that's all I have for this evening.
And then do you have a, you have any answer to Bruce Cole regarding the bridge installation?
Yes, he did ask about the width of the bridge. I'm not aware that the width of the bridge has been lessened, but Monica Rada is on the line and she should be able to respond to the question.
Are you there, Monica?
Yes, I am. Good, good evening.
Go ahead.
Council members, yes, the width is twelve feet, so it's actually. Bigger or the same width as it as the previous bridge and the trail itself is ten feet wide, so it's not changing.
Okay, same with. Thank you very much.
Sure.
All right, next one.
Mayor, I will also want to add in relation to the comments related to. Affordable housing projects in Pomona and Claremont. As you know, those projects have been financed by state dollars that have been brought to San Gabriel Valley through Senator Susan Rubio. Through a trust fund that she established with the state legislature. And we are expecting and hope that when there is a change in representation that we will. Certainly, if Susan Rubio is the representative for Montclair, we would ask her to extend that program to the city of Montclair as well.
Thank you very much. I I will begin to compliment our Montclair city staff. We've had a number of incidents with taking place in the city of Montclair since our last city council meeting. I'll start with the fire that took place on Ramon Avenue, a house fire approximately two, two, two Sundays ago. And I want to obviously compliment our fire department along with the agencies from the surrounding city of Montclair. Responding to that fire was a severe fire and I understand whether two other structures were partially damaged. As a result of that fire. I also want to. Bring up that one of our police officers was assaulted, that you probably read the newspaper at the Montclair Place, that was about two weeks ago. Outside in the parking lot, we had a group of youth that was creating much disruption. And then our police officer is trying to resolve the issue and try to have the youth leave the property. Unfortunately. One of our offers was struck. I know that the those who were responsible were apprehended. And are will be dealt with through our judicial system here. In addition to that, we did have winds in Montclair and obviously want to recognize. Police and fire, but I also want to recognize the Public Works Department. All three of them worked very hard starting. Basically at midnight when the winds began. And I can say that by the time I drove the city about nine or ten o'clock in the morning. Much of the city was under control, the signal lights that were out of operation, our 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 public works crews already had the barricades up. With the stop signs to ensure that the motors do stop. And obviously, our some of our surrounding neighborhood cities, especially to the north, had more severe problems in terms of the wind damage than Montclair did. I also want to bring up the last Friday, as we all know, we had two horrific events here in the city of Montclair. And I want to first again commend our police and fire department responding to the stressful events. And also recognizing, I want to clear police detectives for clearing both crime sites by Saturday mid morning. I didn't go out to both sites. And then I went to. The restaurant.
Lazy Dog.
Thank you, Lazy Dog, and talked to the general manager. And they were already open by mid morning in their operation. And I'm very confident that our police department will apprehend those who were who were responsible for both. Incidents and obviously they will face justice as a result of their of their harm, their harmful act. And obviously, we want to give condolences to the families and friends who are being impacted by the loss of their loved ones. Obviously, those who witnessed the incidents. And we will, you know, obviously wish them wish them well. And finally, I want to. I want to say this along with my colleagues that we as a city of Montclair condemn these violent acts that took place in the city of Montclair last Friday. We are a very peaceful city. We are a very safe city here. And these type incidents are not tolerated in the city of Montclair. And I do expect again, those responsible will be apprehended and they will face full justice. I do want to say one thing, I appreciate the city council approving the paving contract for South of Montclair, the area I live in. And they're one of the largest areas in Montclair that has not been paved yet, so thank you, city council, for approving that item this evening to award the contract. And then as I brought up earlier today, Rams are in the Super Bowl and we're very proud of the Rams because there are many Rams fans from the city of Montclair. And I'd like to wish this the Rams well and I'm hoping that Sunday they are victorious and be victorious. Well, we'll we'll have a Rams Day in Montclair the following day on Monday. I don't suspect any opposition to that. So I'll now move on to on to council communication. And I will start with Mayor Pro Tem, Bill Rube.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I will mention that February is Black History Month. And there's a lot to learn. One of the, I'll keep it a very quick story. I would encourage everybody to read the story of the three hundred sixty ninth regiment during the First World War. They are soldiers who volunteered from Harlem. Primarily African American soldiers. They deeply loved this country and they wanted to do their part. They were sent overseas and were told by the American forces that they could not fight alongside. Their white counterparts. The military was segregated in those days. One of the generals decided that he wanted to find something better. The government then attached them to the French Army. Although they had some American uniforms, they fought under the flag of the French. These soldiers found a non segregated army. They found one where they were treated with tremendous dignity. They were highly decorated. A hundred and seventy of them were given the Croix de Guerre by the government of France. Some of them decided to stay in France for the remainder of their lives because they said the treatment was better. Others returned here to America, the vast majority of them. And almost every single one of them became an activist for civil rights to push forward that they had sacrificed for this country. And demanded better. It was a long, long fight for them, but they did it. One of the generals said that they served with dignity, duty. And devotion. One of those soldiers, and I could go on about stories of them, one of them was somebody you may or may not know, Noble Seisel. He was a jazz composer. He wrote for Broadway plays, Hollywood movies. He was active almost up to the end of his life in nineteen seventy five and highly regarded. And he wrote several stories about how proud he was to be able to serve in the three hundred and sixty ninth, so if you have a chance, look that up and read it. We also begin celebrating Lunar New Year. This is the year of the tiger and more specifically, the water tiger. The tiger expels evil, so this is a year with everything that's been going on. We expect a lot of the bad things to start to. Go away and I look forward to seeing what it holds and I wish Happy New Year to all of our friends who celebrate the Lunar New Year. On January twenty sixth, Congress member Norma Torres visited us at the senior center. And she did give out the COVID. At home tests. Many of the seniors I know appreciated this. I know that for some of them, the at home test is the best way to do it. And I appreciate her efforts on that. The next day, January twenty seventh, and Councilmember Johnson was there as well. She was at the senior centers along with Mayor Dutre as well too, but Congressman Torres toured the Central Avenue Bridge. Many of you know the bridge that. Is the overpass from Central at Holt to Central at Mission. It is over fifty years old. It needs a tremendous amount of. Either rehabilitation or just rebuilding. The congress member understood, she knew that. This is a major bridge. There's a lot of truck traffic on it as people go between trucks go between the ten and the sixty. It's also a major north south. Route for our folks who work and our professionals and our families, so she. Really, really took a look at that. We appreciate her effort and time on that. Um, excuse me. It was mentioned earlier about the housing trust fund started by Senator Susan Rubio. It is a great concept. I am pleased that in my professional life, my life away from city council. I was one of a large group of people who supported that and I've sat in on some of the meetings and the money is being used wisely and well. And depending what happens in the future, we don't know. Perhaps this way Montclair might be able to become involved with it. We don't know yet. There's a lot that has to change, but they've done a lot of good things with it and I won't go into all of them tonight. And then lastly, again, I really want to thank our police officers. Everybody in public safety who are involved in some of the incidents. That isn't, that happened, that is not what Montclair is. We know that. I grew up here in town. I remember when the bridge wasn't there at Central Avenue. And so I know who this community is and we're not that. And also with the winds, power lines down, streets that were difficult to navigate, we did a great job. Thank you to everybody. And that's it.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, ma'am.
Are you there, Denise? Think you broke up Denise. Let's, let's go to, you're breaking up Denise.
Yes, can you hear me better now?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, I do have a question for staff regarding the status of the splash pad. I want to, I'm hoping that. And we're working on it now because I believe last year we were several months were needed to get it up and going and. Summer will be here in three blinks of an eye, so I'm hoping that that is being worked on right now.
Yes, the splash pad is being worked on. We've already made clear to Public Works that that pad will be opening this summer. In fact, it should open effective with the Country Fair Jamboree.
Excellent, thank you for that. The second thing is I'm happy to report that we have a new business here in the city of Montclair. It's Harmony Nursing Services and they is a ribbon cutting on Thursday, this coming Thursday at noon. At their location and that address. One second, please. That address is. Four, six, five, one Holt Boulevard, Unit I in Montclair. So there's a free lunch and snacks are provided, so come and join us. You got to have lunch anyway, so come and check out this new facility. It's actually an educational facility for nurses. So come and check it out on Thursday, February tenth at noon on at four, six, five, one Holt Boulevard. And lastly, I want to talk about Black History Month. We seem to to talk about. Black history in terms of broad events, but I really want to focus on on how people were individually impacted and I want to talk to you. I'm sure you've heard of her. Her name is Mamie Till. And her son was kidnapped in the middle of the night because he had whistled at a white woman. And he was taken pretty far away and several, he was beaten and he was found in the pond. And so when they drug him from the pond and they returned him to his family for his funeral. His mother, I'm sure she had to be repulsed at looking at the horrible damage that had been done to her son. But she refused to let them close the casket. So during the funeral, his casket was open so that not only the people who attended the funeral, but the world. Could see what had happened to him and that took a great deal of strength on her part and it's about the struggle that mothers go through. Trying to protect their children when they can't. So, you know, and I say all that to say, we all need to think about. What we look at and how we reflect, how we talk to other people and how we treat other people. That's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Martinez.
I'm here. Yeah, I also wanted to thank Montclair Police and Fire for doing an excellent job. Especially over the last few days, it's been pretty rough in Montclair. So thank you and. Happy Black History Month as well. I hope that everyone. Has an opportunity to reflect on what that really means this month and and I second the comments by our. My council colleagues.
Thank you. Finally, we have Councilmember Lopez.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor and colleagues. I was encouraged today to hear both through online reports and the news. That the COVID numbers have dropped, not just a little bit, but they use the words drastically and unexpectedly. So that is encouraging news that the numbers are going in the right direction. I know that here in San Bernardino County, I was looking at the numbers as well online. Compared to twenty twenty numbers, we are nowhere near the severity that we were facing even a year and a half, two years ago, so that is encouraging. Regarding, I'll echo some of the comments by my colleagues before regarding the officer that was assaulted. I'm glad to hear that he is recovering at home and doing well. But I I I don't take too kindly to hearing of our officers being assaulted. I don't care what the circumstances are. As many know, I come from a military and police family and they're near and dear to my heart, so. To the Montclair Police Officers that are out there, we appreciate you. Thank you for what you do. While some may not appreciate you and respect you, know that that we do. And I thank you for sacrificing the time away from your family to report to work. Put on that badge and represent this city and law enforcement on our streets. Thank you so much, each and every single one of you. Regarding the street improvements, I know that there has been chatter over the past months and past year and a half. From some of the residents on in the southern end of town saying that they have felt neglected regarding their streets. Well. Hope is on the way. As the mayor had alluded to, we just adopted tonight the. A contract to get those streets repaved and get the ball rolling and the process going. So the southern end of town, you are not neglected. You are, you definitely have been heard. You've been on our minds and your streets will be fixed. And we look forward to to that hopefully hopefully happening sooner than later. Of course, we can't predict weather. Or other external delays, but we also ask for your patience as each of those streets are blocked and, you know. Broken up and sidewalks are probably impacted and parking is impacted, so we do ask for your patience. Also, given the the winds that we had, the very bad winds, the last time we had winds of this magnitude was October of twenty twenty. I remember because it was in the midst of the election year in the campaign. And one day, campaign signs are up and the next day, signs that were in Montclair ended up probably in Diamond Bar, the way those winds were blowing. But thank you, Public Works, Fire and P D. For all that you did in making sure that roads were secured and blocked off that needed it. Debris was picked up, tree trunks were were addressed and handled, so we appreciate that. I do this periodically regarding the ten freeway and the construction around the freeway. There will be a ten day ramp closure, ten days, starting tomorrow, going through February eighteen. The eastbound ten approaching Fourth Street. The off ramp, I'm sorry, the on ramp will be blocked, completely shut for ten days and that will no doubt. Effect traffic, I'm sure as folks take a detour, they'll come into Montclair, those of us residents that may think we can take that on ramp. As we travel, please take note that February eighth through the eighteenth, it will be shut down. And then a fifty five hour freeway closure. Again, scheduled February eleventh through the fourteenth. Two right lanes of eastbound ten approaching Mountain Avenue. So if you're heading towards Ontario and Upland, the from the fourteenth through the eighteenth, there will be a fifty five hour freeway closure. And that will no doubt affect some of the traffic here in the city as they come to Central or Montevista. So please, we ask for your patience. I live near, very close to the Montevista and ten construction zone. It's a good test of patience, I'll I'll tell you. I just want to share real quickly, I was having a conversation. About maybe two weeks ago with a gentleman by the name of Daniel Evers Everett. Daniel Evers Everett is a high school friend of mine and he is the grandson of Medgar Evers. And. Daniel has given me. And Daniel has given me many a lesson and some eye-opening discussions and experiences that his grandfather and his family have passed on to him and have shared. Him and I are, we've been playing phone tag or text tag, if you will. We've been meaning to do lunch, but I plan on bringing him here to the city and catching up with him. It perhaps if we have an event with the chamber or any civic group that would like to have him come and speak, perhaps that option could be made available growing in the in the family of the the Evers family. But anyhow, that that is just something that is touching to me that I actually know someone very close to Medgar Evers and history and the significance of Medgar Evers to civil rights here in the country. Mr. Mayor, with that, I believe I am done, other than to say, go Rams. Let's let's hope we take it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Well, thank you very much. I just want to note that, as you know, Mountain Avenue on-ramp going east is closed. Obviously, it has an impact on Central Avenue, but that's going to end on February the tenth. And so that'll ease the traffic on Central Avenue. And I appreciate my colleagues recognizing Black History Month. I also would like to recognize February as Black History Month, especially here in the city of Montclair. So now we're going down to closed session. So what we would do is we'll take about five minutes and then we'll be in closed sessions. Is that okay with everybody? Five-minute break?
Yes, that's right.
So we were convened at about seven fifty-five. Okay, so I believe.
Someone tries to enter, they can't.
Okay, so at this time, Andrea, I believe we're back in open session of the city council. The city council met in closed session. There's no report of action. And at this time, we will adjourn our city council meeting. And the next meeting again will be the workshop on February sixteen. Thank you very much.
That meeting will be in the council chambers.
As a hybrid meeting, yes.
Yes.
Okay.